Sorry. Good morning, everyone. Let's go ahead and call to order a meeting of the work session of the Kent County Board of Commissioners to deal with the zoo master plan. So, thank you all for being here. I will turn it over to Peter Di Renzo to get us started and introduce whoever else is going to be involved in the presentation. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for being here.
Sorry, I grabbed a candy bar just before you came here, so.
(laughing). Go ahead.
Sounds great. Good morning. Thanks for being here. This is a great opportunity to really chart the future of the zoo and our community together. Today, our economic impact is just over $100 million per year to Kent County, and we're the fifth fastest growing zoo in the United States. I'm also pleased to say that as of today, we're at 150,000 people and just six weeks in attendance. And really, a lot of that growth, I, we attribute to, to the county. This is a great place to live. It's a great place to move to. It's a great place to raise a family. It's a great, great place to work. And this master plan, together, we're going to chart the next 10 years of what this zoo can do for the community, but also for saving wildlife and wild places. So, it's not just about economic impact, about prosperity, it's about community, it's about education, it's about bringing families together, and for us, most importantly, it's about saving the world. So, I'd like to play a short video, and then I'll turn it over to the experts.
We breathe the same air, touch the same soil, cultivate the same earth, share the same faith. We are all keepers of our world. The diversity of life on earth is both fascinating and inspiring, yet many lack opportunities to observe and connect with animals in the wild, and many species are becoming rare, threatened, and endangered. Zoos give us all a place to connect with unique species that captivate the imagination. Zoos give us a place to engage in conservation of species locally and around the globe. Zoos can set a high bar for a sustainable future with facilities that meet the highest Zoos have the power to bring the community together through events, programs, and education. Here at John Ball Zoo, we are proud of the work we do locally and globally. We take pride in inspiring current and future generations to care for our natural world and the future of all species. None of this is possible without the support of our donors, sponsors, and members. It is you that makes this mission possible.
Great. All right. Thank you. I think I'll turn it over to David and Craig, who are experts in the industry. Craig is an architect, and zoo design is highly specialized, and David leads a consulting firm that provides strategic insight, master planning, and also the architect of the aquarium feasibility study, too. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, every, good morning, everybody. My name's David Walsh. I'm with Canopy Strategic Partners. We are a consulting firm that is based out of Philadelphia, although our team is nationwide. And I've had the pleasure of working with the John Ball Zoo pretty much for about 20 years of my career. I have worked and seen the growth of kind of this amazing trajectory that you've been on over the last 20 years. Our most recent project with the zoo was the feasibility study for the aquarium, but also worked on the governance shift when the zoo became its own nonprofit. So, just a little bit about my experience before I turn it over to Craig to introduce himself. We work with accredited zoos all across the country. I've worked with about 150 accredited zoos of all sizes, from some of the largest zoos in the country to some of the smaller to midsize zoos. So, we get to see a lot of the trends, and what we'd like to share here today is some of those trends, and then engage in some conversation about what that, what that can look like for the John Ball Zoo. Craig?
Thanks, David. I'm Craig Rhodes. I represent TESSARAY. We have a national practice in zoo and aquarium design. I'm from Wichita, Kansas, but we do have people all over the country. I am an architect by training. I'm a zoo professional by passion and by work. And we are, we do master planning, habitat design, those kinds of things that you see in some of the best zoos in the country. Our work is very complimentary to what David does. He, he puts a strategy in place, and we, we come in and we make sure that strategy is met with some of the facilities that we build. So, looking forward to this presentation today. We've been working with Peter and Almond and staff at the John Ball Zoo for about five years now, and we know your community very well, been here many times. As Peter said, it really is a great community. Always enjoy coming here. So, let's get on with it.
Thanks, Craig. And so, the, the goal of this discussion is really for more of a conversation. Peter and Almond asked us to facilitate a discussion of what that would, what the zoo of the future could look like. So, we do have a couple of slides, but I, we'd really like to have some engaging conversation around really what some of these trends mean here in the Grand Rapids in West Michigan community, and what that means for you. Our perspectives are national and international, but we know each community is unique. And so, how do these trends that we're going to talk about really impact here in Grand Rapids? So, walk through a couple of these key trends. Sorry. Get back to the slides. Do we have our technical experts here? I'm always like. I guess I could ju-
(inaudible).
Perfect. So, the first trend that we'd like to talk about is this increased focus on animal well-being, and how important that is for any type of exhibit or habitat that is being built. We're really looking at the well-being, and the AZA community has shifted from even wellness to a growing, growing body there that really looks at the whole well-being of an animal, because that's how your guests are really looking at, at these animals in, in their habitats, in, in designing habitats that are really well-suited for a variety, you know, whatever type of animal is there from a size perspective. And so, what we are seeing with, with these habitats that are being built, there's more space, there is more opportunities for enrichment and choice, that the animal has choice to be either on exhibit or off exhibit, and that isn't, that's really important, because you want to have that ability for, for choice for the animal, and making sure that there is that space, a space for breeding, both the indoor, you know, from a climate perspective as well, particularly here in this community. So, really, looking at all of those factors from a well-being side is, is really critical, and we're seeing that in more and more exhibits. And Craig, you can talk about some of the specific exhibit design.
Yeah. Thank you, David. So, I want to start with a statement that my grandfather's zoo is not my grandson's zoo. What does that mean? The whole industry has changed dramatically, and as David said, the focus on animal well-being, today's guests are far more sophisticated than they were 50 years ago. Part of it is because of, you know, just the accessibility of knowledge. So, it's really important that any habitat, any animals we keep in our care, John Ball Zoo keeps in their care, have absolutely the best lives. And what I like to say is, can you imagine living your life in a, in a five-star resort with a spa services every day? That's really what we're looking for. And when those animals have that kind of space and that kind of care, they, 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 they thrive. When animals are thriving, your guests see that, and guests leave inspired to save the natural world. So, part of, part of what you're seeing here is projected in California. It's a living desert. This is a four-acre habitat for black rhinos. It also has, it's a mixed-species exhibit. It has many different other antelope and hoofstock in it. But what's really critical here, and you can't really see in this image, in fact, it's hard to capture, is the fact that we, what we like to say in our practice is we've reversed the paradigm. The paradigm, again, your grandfather's zoo, your grandmother's zoo, you went to the zoo, you walked, and you looked at animals, and the animals were on display. We really like to reverse it. We like to think that the animals live there, and the guests are on display for the animals. So, we kind of reverse that, and the guests get that, and they really feel it. And that's really what great zoos are doing today.
Any questions that, or comments that anybody has in terms of kind of the, the well-being trends, or things that you'd like to make sure that we're seeing here at John Ball? Yes?
I'm just curious if animals have choice or not to be seen, to be on display. Do you have guests, then, who are disappointed and complain? I didn't see the lion.
Yes. You, you definitely do see that in terms of that choice, and kind of if they're back of house, or even if they're kind of in an area that, that is kind of covered up. And what you want to do is create these enrichment opportunities for, for them to come closer. And we, I saw that yesterday at, at the zoo when I was out walking around, and the tiger was in its, in its bath, right up front, right in front of the glass. So, you can design to encourage those behaviors that get them closer, but ultimately, you want to give that animal some choice. But I think there are a lot of design elements that you can build in for that. Craig, you're more the expert in the design.
No, you did, you did great. I'll, I'll work on the strategy. Anyway, having fun here. You're exactly right. And part of, the people, of course, always come to the zoo to see the animals. It's really critical. David is exactly right. We do know, we understand animal behavior. We tried to design these facilities so you can get glimpses of the animals. It does happen on occasion, the animals get away. But it's also, what's important is that, that the guests of today and in the future need to understand the entire operation of the zoo. So, what we really like to do is, is, is open up the backside of the zoo as well, if we can. Allow guests to understand the operation it takes to, to care for these animals, see the quality of care that they get for these animals. So, even if you're not seeing them maybe on a, in a beautiful habitat like this, there are opportunities in the zoo of the future to get quote-unquote "behind the scenes" and see the, the kind of care they're receiving. So, the, so the zoo experiences of the future are drastically different than they are today.
The, the next trend that's really critical to creating a, the zoo of the future, and kind of that excellent, top-leading zoo, is creating these opportunities for engagement, and being able to get up close to the animals to provide some interaction. And it doesn't have to be touch, but it can be close, like, like this photo here, and I think what is, what is being planned with the new otter exhibit out at the, out at the zoo, in terms of being able to really have that personal engagement, whether it be behind a glass, whether it be behind a, some fencing, or, or in some cases, even for, for some feeding, and these up-close interactions. What we are seeing with these interactions, though, is that they're being tied with behavioral enrichment. So, you're getting animals up closer to your guests, but they are tied to being able to train the animal to get a blood draw, to get other, other sorts of medical testing, and other, other work that's being done with, with the animals. So, that it's not just for the pleasure of the, the guest, but it's for the benefit of the animal as well. And we are seeing kind of that, that shift away, that it's not just for our enjoyment as the guest, but what is in the best interest of the animal. Craig?
No, that's good. I just want to kind of highlight this image. We do know that this is the most kind of memorable experience you can have in a zoo, is, is when you get to actually interact with animals, and hopefully, giraffe could be just an example of what could be coming to John Ball Zoo.
Other questions, any questions on any interaction, or things that you're looking to see in terms of these opportunities for interaction out at the zoo as, as part of the, the next growth and development at the zoo? Yes?
Good morning. I was just curious, as this progresses, will the current footprint with the current exhibits kind of remain intact? Are you planning on maybe retrofitting some things into the current, or, you know what I'm saying? I, I know when I go there, I, of course, I like Monkey Island, like everybody else, it's my favorite thing. But it is kind of disappointing when there's certain exhibits, seems like the animals are never out. So, would it be a good use of effort and time, money, to simply replace those exhibits with more? Because kids like animals, period. I don't think you're going to imagine it to them.
Absolutely.
So, I was just wondering how you can incorporate your current footprint as part of this process.
You're bringing, bringing up a great question regarding kind of the retrofit, or re, repurposing, or renovation of existing habitats. It is extraordinarily important. As part of our planning, we are looking at every habitat on the campus, what it takes, and certainly, there's a cost-benefit to rehabbing existing habitats if they are semi-successful. When we look at success, though, we have to look at not only the guest engagement, but the quality of space for the animals. And some, with our focus on well-being, sometimes the animals just require more space than is, than is possible within their existing habitat. But, you know, what I like to take it as analogy of, like the urban city, you know, back in the 60s, you know, we, there was this thing called urban sprawl, and we kept working on the edges. Now, you know, and then back, get into the 90s and the 2000s, we work on repairing the core. I mean, Grand Rapids has a beautiful core. So, it's really important to take care of the core before you can work on the edges. And, and so, the planning does take into account both end.
Yes.
Good morning. I'm, I'm always excited about the zoo. I am a supporter of the zoo, and my daughter went to zoo school. So, we got to experience the zoo in very many different ways. I'm, I'm just curious, are there species or animals that are requested that we don't have at our zoo? And when you talk about the benefit of the animal, other than being fed, what does that mean?
Great question. Want to take that? Thanks. Yeah, sure. I'd love to. So, species, you know, the giraffe is, I think, one that we talk about a lot at the John Ball Zoo that would be a great potential. And of course, they're charismatic, they're big. You can get up close to them like this in a controlled environment. And then, the second part of your question, can you repeat the second part of your question, please?
Are there animals that are being requested that we don't have at our zoo?
Yeah. 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 So, so again, the giraffe is one. The, the other part of the question, I think, was, gosh.
What's the benefit other than getting fed?
Yeah. What's the benefit other? Thank you so much. That's what I was stretching, stretching for. The benefit other than getting fed. Of course, this is, this is, this is the moment we're capturing right here, and this moment should be available to, to most of your guests. And again, it's the memorable moment. We believe that, you know, if you have that moment with these animals, they, they will remember that forever. You know, it's like, I remember when I was four years old, and I got to go to the zoo and feed the giraffe. It was so cool. But the benefit for the animals, again, is, is space. We got to make sure that we have the right family groups. Like, it used to be, we would take a herd of animals, and maybe, maybe we'd have two, and we'd get a baby giraffe or something, and then, you know, ship the baby giraffe out. But now, what we're doing is we're keeping those animals longer in family groups. So, we're getting to see a lot of social dynamics for the animals as well. And that's really important to the animal well-being. We're really, you know, because these are, these are ambassadors for their wild brethren. We're really trying hard to create a fantastic environment so they can act and behave very naturally. So, beyond just feeding, it's, you know, the animal welfare, the animal health aspects, David touched on it. You know, we have, there's staff of veterinarians, you can see veterinarian procedures, you can, you can see how they're cared for day-to-day. We have a, we have a, some clients who are talking like the very, the zoo, the cutting-edge part of the conversation of the zoo is, is there a way that maybe someday to make the hidden zoo go away? Because people are not generally aware of the good work that goes into zoos to create these fantastic animals, create these fantastic environments. And when people understand that, you know, they're really tied to conservation programs in Sichu and Africa, you know, it's really good for the planet, you know, it's good, it's, it's just good for the community. When we're doing good for the community, doing good for the planet, doing good for the animals, it's really the whole thing. It's more, it's more than just what you see here. But this, this, this really is where it all starts, we believe, is that, is that eye-to-eye, nose-to-nose. So.
I have a follow-up maybe on that question, if I could. So, let's assume that running a zoo has limits financially. Imagine that. What's more essential in spending, diversity of species or the quality of habitat, probably?
I, I don't think it's necessarily an either-or. I, I would say it's, it's the quality of that habitat and that space for the animals. It's not just more for more sake. And that's what we are seeing, I think, in the, in the zoo community as a whole, that zoos are shrinking their overall collection size because they can't hold as many animals because of the size requirements, habitat size, because of the, the more complex needs of any sort of habitat design. So, I think in the, you know, 10, 20 years from now, you will see most zoos have a smaller number of species. They might have more, they might have a, a bigger group of tigers or, or giraffe, but it might not be, you might not have 100 different species at, at one, at one zoo.
And are there, are there core species that you kind of have to have if you're going to be a zoo?
It's, it's a very good question, and there used to be kind of, yeah, you had to have your, you know, your big, I think, they think, they refer to it as the big five, like elephants, lions, tigers. Lions, tigers, bears, but kind of these huge charismatic animals. Yeah. The, some large primates. But again, what we are seeing is that all, all zoos cannot hold all of those species. I mean, so many institutions have, have gotten out of the elephant holding, and I think you'll see that with other animals as well, because where, where the profession is going is, we want to provide the best quality of care for the animals that we can have, and that have, that we can help in terms of saving animals and conserving animals for the future. So, I think that's what we are seeing in kind of the overall direction of where the profession's going to go. Yeah.
To follow up on another thing that Commissioner Oliver King mentioned with the zoo school, wondering what are the current trends in engagement beyond just the paying customers for the zoo, but thinking about how are we engaging educational entities, how are we providing opportunities for other K-12 schools, higher education, researchers to partner with the zoo to sort of, again, open up that backend of what's going on behind the scenes of the zoo? So, can you talk a little bit about what those trends are?
Yeah. We're, we're seeing a lot in terms of the partnerships that zoos are creating with, with primary, secondary, and higher education institutions. I, we are seeing kind of with a lot of our clients, kind of that growth in the higher ed space with some, with some research programs, particularly in conservation. But we're also seeing it in terms of training that next generation of zoologists, biologists, you know, wildlife, wildlife experts, conservation experts, kind of getting that, what you're doing and have been doing, kind of exposing that generation. So, we are seeing it. I guess one trend that, that I've seen in, from an education space, it's less outreach, it's less taking people, you know, taking our programs out, it's trying to get people to come into the site. And so, creating a site that can accommodate them and programs. It's not like you never go out, but, you know, you have a, a strong asset with the zoo. How do you maximize that asset and kind of bring people in? And you, since you already have the zoo school, you're already doing that somewhat.
And as a follow-up, what, what sort of facilities or infrastructure does that kind of effort require in terms of making the experience really well-received?
Sure. I can talk about facilities. So, it's, it's a great question. It's everything from state-of-the-art education facilities, you know, school buildings, not really traditional school buildings, but, you know, on-campus in Sichu at the zoo. Those, those buildings have, could have global outreach centers in them, you know, auditoriums where you can do programs, you can, those programs can reach out community all the way up through, through the globe. We've seen that. And then, the other part is when we design these habitats, generally, there's a lot of places where we have for school groups to actually engage in kind of a separate and meaningful way from traditional guests. So, so you don't have like a large school group, say you have 30 or 40 kids, they want to interact with, let's use the giraffe since he's up on the screen. But we, you also want to be able to have your average, your average, your, your daily guests interact as well. So, they can be two different kinds of spaces that are blended well seamlessly into the same environment. So, there's many conversations and many different techniques to use along that way.
One follow-final up, because you pinged a word for me, this global connection. What sorts of connections interconnectedness between zoos are you seeing, and how might that sort of inform us in the way they were designing the future?
Interconnected between zoos in particular?
Yeah. You talked about sort of the global, the global aspect of things, right?
Well, all zoos are, you know, your, your, your best zoos, which John Ball Zoo is one of them, is part of the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, the AZA. And the AZA works together on a daily basis to ensure that the survival of the species. It's really about global conservation of the animals at the end of the day, saving wild animals and wild places, as Peter said so well. And so, so there's every day these connections between, you know, whether, whether it's the Detroit Zoo, or you're dealing with the San Diego Zoo, or maybe you're dealing with Zoos Victoria out of Australia, that are all interconnected. The communications are going on all day long. And in fact, some of those zoos, including John Ball Zoo, are pushing to make, to make sure that these kinds of goals about global conservation and education and guest engagement are met. And what does that mean? What's the public want? So, it's not just, you know, John Ball Zoo acting alone. John Ball Zoo is part of a very important network. It really exists, it exists for saving wild animals and wild places.
Thanks.
Is it true? I mean, I thought it was in the wild, but that the animals are actually owned? I mean, it's not just like a loose association or something, right? Does, does that association own the animals?
I'd have to, I'd have to defer that to Peter or Almond, to the ownership of the animals. Really, it, it varies. I mean, we're, honestly, honestly, you know, it, you know, animals are not typically bought and sold. I mean, these are, these are, animals are bred for conservation.
Thank you. Great question. So, the animals do have a, like a home base of record, but the animals are shared collectively. So, we'll get a request from a species coordinator to say, hey, can we move this animal from this location to another location? And while you could say no, if you did ask three times, you don't really have a choice. So, there, there isn't ownership in the traditional sense, but there is an, the animal is owned by record at a location, and that is more to drive offspring. So, if they're not going back out into the wild, the, the owner tends to get the firstborn, and then the host zoo gets the second, and so, there's kind of a hierarchy that way. We rarely will buy animals. There are some changes in the well-being standard within AZA that requires that if you bring in an animal from outside the AZA network, then we have to actually have boots on the ground and inspect the facility, either by us or another member institution, to make sure that those animals are in a positive state of well-being. If they're not, then you, you can't get animals from that source. Thank you.
Yeah, we, go ahead.
I don't want to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
Just curious. I, I know right now, in, in the wild here in Michigan, so to speak, because of lack of hunting, lack of predation, for whatever reasons, there's been a bunch of diseases that have been popping up. And I can think of like chronic wasting disease, bovine tuberculosis, eastern equine tuberculosis or encephalitis, whatever it is. But they're getting more and more rampant. Now, I've always been curious, that's usually caused from too many critters in the same spot. They tend to come in to feeding, that's why- you can't get animals from that source. Thank you.
Can we, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Just curious, I, I know right now in, in the wild here in Michigan, so to speak, because of lack of hunting, lack of predation, for whatever reasons, there's been a bunch of diseases that have been popping up. And I can think of like chronic wasting disease, bovine tuberculosis, eastern equine tuberculosis, or encephalitis, whatever it is. But they're getting more and more rampant. Now, I've always been curious, that's usually caused from too many critters in the same spot. They tend to come in to feeding, that's why we can't feed them anymore because they spread these diseases. How do you manage to stay on top of that at a zoo? And how much of a consideration is as far as putting this critter next to this critter? Is there a science or a biology about the disease that can occur in those situations? And how do you rectify that? That's a brutal question.
This is probably getting way out of my pay grade in terms of animal health. But what I will say is there is an incredible investment being made across the profession on animal health, that animal health side, and really stepping up that overall care of how you, you know, how you manage those animals, how you, you care for those animals, and what kind of care they need. And so that investment is just continuing to increase dramatically. I don't know, Peter, did you want to add something specifically?
I'll add real quick while Peter's coming up. As veterinarians are always part of the habitat design too. They're at the table with us when we're designing. So, but Peter, you want to fill in the gap?
Sure. That's a great question. So there's a variety of things we look at. There are disease between animals of the same species, disease across other animals, and then like zoonosis, disease that moves from human to animal or animal to human. For example, we would never put old world primates and new world primates together for that reason because old world primates can carry a pathogen that could kill new world primates. It's also why we don't allow dogs in the zoo. And with the exception of service dogs, but even with service dogs, there are rules around that in order to protect our animals. It's also why as an AZA accredited zoo, unlike of all the locations that have a USDA license to exhibit animals, only 10% of them achieve AZA accreditation. We have a full-time vet on staff. We actually have more than one vet. So it's the high quality of the medical care between the vets, the vet technicians, support staff. We have an onsite laboratory to, we can do analysis. If we need something deeper, we send it out. So is there a concern of, of disease or getting sick? Sure, just like we as humans go to the doctor. But I can say they receive high-quality medical care that they wouldn't receive in the wild, which is why animals under our care live significantly longer than they would in, in the wild. It's a good question though. It's also why we need to invest in ever-expanding animal hospitals and care.
Ooh, I like that.
Yes.
Hi. And again, like I said, I'm always excited about the zoo. In fact, I was just thinking Tony Baker and I, Commissioner Baker and I, our daughters were in the same class and they learned math from your staff in terms of teaching them how ingredients are calculated to be in the diet. And it's an experience that I'm able to brag about because no other parent is like, they have a school at the zoo for sixth graders? But I'm curious because I remember our daughters talking about, they also talk about the, the plant species that you have at the zoo and what they've learned about that. And, and yet that's not a part of your conversation when you talk about conservation. Why is that?
It, well, it is part of the conversation. The horticulture side is really important in terms of the overall experience for, for the guests. And what we are seeing is an increasing conversation about not only wildlife, but kind of the wild places conservation. And so I think you'll be seeing more and more of that as zoo professions and within the AZA community talking about kind of conservation species. There's a unique program that's happening in Chicago where the Shedd Aquarium and Morton Arboretum are partnering on saving, saving wild places as well.
Because you also have botanists and folks along that line also employed at the zoo, correct?
Yeah.
So thank you for that question. Many zoo directors have more of a biology background. I have an environmental science ecology. Very passionate about place setting. And with only 4% of the world's mammals actually out in the wild, I think there's, it's critical that we talk about place setting. And when these animals are released in the wild, or when we want them to thrive in the wild, what's the condition of the land, water, and air? And of course, the plants. It's all a system that's tied together. And we, there is a lot of change happening at AZA zoos, but we're leading from the front in that perspective on habitat restoration, place setting. And it's also why Almond does a lot of work around sustainability. So what are we, the whole front entrance of the zoo is, tells the story of water. Not only do you have enough water, but what is the condition of that water? What does it mean to be clean? And we're doing this from a position of leadership. We're the first zoo in the world to achieve gold sites, which is sites is to land states as lead is to buildings. We're also very excited with, I'm sure we'll be sending these drawings to Al and the coming weeds, but we're, we're hoping to pursue sites for the new parking project. And that would be the first time in the world that an actual parking lot achieves the highest standard of land state certifications. Our top horticulturist, we hired years ago from Meyer Gardens. And in our master plan, it includes a lot of native plannings to educate and tell that, tell that story. So thank you for asking. I'm very passionate about, about that subject.
And Peter mentioned the, the entry experience. And what we are seeing in terms of entry experience is this concept of designing to be welcoming and creating spaces first where people can gather together upfront, creating that really welcoming experience from the start, and also that education experience and telling that, that story right from the beginning. And Craig can talk about a couple of the projects that he's worked on that really has, has created this opportunity for, for gathering and welcoming.
Thanks. The project you're looking at here is the Sedgwick County Zoo. That's Wichita, Kansas. That's my hometown. Wichita, Sedgwick County is very similar to Grand Rapids and Kent County in terms of size and composition. It's also a top 10 zoo in the United States. This, this, this entry complex you're looking at here opened a few years ago. What's important about it is, is it really becomes a welcoming. You can see, it's almost like open arms, like come on in. The, the space between the buildings doesn't look like a, doesn't, is not foreboding at all. It's, it's very welcoming. It comes in. The plaza out in front acts as a fantastic place. They host marathons, bike rides, motorcycle rallies, all kinds of things out in front of this plaza on an annual basis. It really becomes a community hub. So that's one of the things we're looking at, is how, how can that entry, really the experience begins outside the door of the zoo. Another one we're, we're involved in doing master planning at the Jacksonville Zoo in Jacksonville, Florida, their new front entry. One of the things they're doing that we're talking about doing here is bringing a fantastic animal habitats right up front. So as soon as you come in the front door, you're showcasing a local species. In this case, in Jacksonville, it's a manatee. John Ball Zoo is likely to be a North American river otter.
The, the other piece, and this actually ties in with the entry because it's kind of where, where you, you start that, start that visit, is the importance of balancing the mission and margin. We can't care for these animals and conserve for the future unless we have the resources to do it. And so, yes, there is the business element of, of running a zoo. And we have looked at that. That's really kind of a core principle of the work that we have done. But it's, it is this balance. It's not an either or, but how you can create opportunities to generate revenue, generate resources, like an event space, you know, hosting, hosting events which actually get people there and exposed to, to the zoo that might not otherwise come out. But you are seeing a whole host of different activities, different opportunities to generate that revenue, generate those resources for an institution, just the lantern program that the zoo is doing in terms of driving, you know, almost what, 50,000 guests so far to, to the zoo. And those types of events not only generate the revenue, but they bring in new audiences. We consistently see as we look at who's coming to those different types of events, that it is a different demographic, different audience that you may see during a traditional daytime visit. And that's really important. It brings people out and exposes people to the zoo. So this, this balancing that mission and margin is, is really critical. And so at any master planning effort that we work on, you look at what are those opportunities to, to generate, generate revenue? Any, any questions or comments on the, the mission and margin trend? Yes?
So I guess related to that topic and, and the engagement piece as well, the, I can definitely tell that there's a lot of effort going into things that bring, you know, visitors in to the zoo that otherwise, you know, probably wouldn't step foot in the zoo. The biggest one that comes to my mind is the Lantern Festival. I know that, you know, has been a, a huge success and, and draws a, a lot of people in. But I, I know there's many others, like this, that Bissell Treehouse facility and the rentals there and everything. But the, I'm curious if you've got anything, you know, strategically in the, in the plans related to like the local homeschooling community?
I, I am not familiar with that, the plan at the moment, but Almond or Peter?
So right now with the homeschool community, that they can participate in the Milledge Promise, free K through 12. So homeschoolers can come for free to the zoo, one trip per year. I, I think where the opportunity is going to be in the master planning process as we develop and, or maybe even better in the education five-year plan, is stakeholder mapping on what should the conservation education center be at the zoo? In the current master plan, there is a large structure on the pond. I think it's roughly 30, 35 feet high. That is the new zoo school, GRPS. But it also has facilities for KISD, for homeschoolers. And I would like to keep that in the master plan, maybe in a different location. But I think it's important that we engage the entire county from an education perspective. We offer a very unique offering from an education perspective. And it's not just about GRPS, it's about the other school districts in the county, and also other ways of, of learning, whether it's homeschool or other needs.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I would just, I guess, add my own commentary. I, I know I've complained in the past about some of like the, the membership policy changes, which aren't as friendly to many in the, the homeschool community. But just in general, I think the, you know, it's a, it's a community that has the ability to, you know, go at times that other people can't. And so like the, the time shifting of, of demand, I think is, is a positive there. And in this area, it's, it's a uniquely large community. So I, I think keeping that in mind.
It is internally and with a few of our board members, we have some, we brought some board members on that are very passionate about education, two of them specifically around homeschool. And we just haven't had the resources yet to invest in a conservation education center. I will say that at two o'clock today is a community stakeholder session with, with these gentlemen. And that does include a variety of educators that are public, private, charter. And I think we have homeschool in there. I could be wrong. But I know it's our intent to absolutely engage the homeschool community. But at this point, we don't have the resources to build the education center. Thank you.
Yes.
I think Matt's up to like 26 kids now that he has living under his roof. So I understand his concern. Just curious about the infrastructure currently out there with water, sewer, electric. Do you have capacity enough right now? Or do you have to expand everything for this? Is that, how much of that cost is coming from the expansion of infrastructure like that?
I'm going to allow Almond to talk a little bit about what's, the things you can't see.
So with the, the front entry project with the pygmy hippos and such, so everything from the aquarium to the east, all that infrastructure was all put in new and sized up for the future in that area there. As we have hit other areas that we have been in, again, we'll upgrade infrastructure in those points. We've already looked at the, so if we expand to the, to the south, so you got the big area where the forest realm is with tigers, giraffe. If we go to the other plateau on the other side, we've already done the, the research when we used Warren Brusnik, I've been using him for 20 some years now, to make sure that what is that capacity needed? Can we size it right? And we've been proactive, so we're ready to go on some of those investments. As long as investments were made back when, you know, when, when, you know, when I worked for the county, we're putting those dollars in some of those areas. But there are other areas that we have not unearthed yet, like you mentioned Monkey Island. Once we get in that area and start doing there, there's going to be a lot of bones buried there that we're going to have to, 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 to upgrade and make sure it's, it's the best we have for it. But we've been looking at as well...
Real bones.
How's that?
Real bones.
I hope not, real bones. Well, if there are, they're animal bones, right? No, no, the, the bones are buried. So, and, and part of the storm bar thing that we did in our, our last renovation, we, we can handle a 100-year stormer event on our site now, you know? And we also planned that with future expansion up in the zoo to make sure we had the capacity already to go. So we were getting forward-thinking about that, that process.
Sounds like it. Thank you. And by the way, I may not ask any more questions. Who designed the logo? I, I guess it's the first time I noticed. I love that logo.
We, we did a rebrand last year. We did some, did some market, market research and realized, hey, we're ready for a refresh, rebrand. So that's part of that rebranding effort. So...
I think it's pretty cool.
Pretty cool. I like it when you saw the video, the little, the little thing with it grip around and kind of, so that tail there, okay, that's a tail, that's T-A-I-T-A...
L-E.
No, it's T, it's a, it's T-A-I-L. So it's about how we can tell tails, not just the animal tail, but other tails that we can tell about the thing, also about, you know, the hills we have here, about water. So, yeah, so anyways, I'll let them get started real quick.
The, the other key element of what keeps great zoos great and good zoos even better is regular investment. And it's both, as you talked about, kind of the, it's the infrastructure, but also new habitats, new experiences. And what we have seen consistently with, with zoos is we really need to have that regular investment schedule. They can't be just once and then wait five, eight years until something else comes. Because what we see really quickly happening is that zoo attendance does drop off and you don't have the resources. So that need to continually to provide that investment into the, the zoo is going to be, going to be really critical. And it's, it doesn't always have to be a major exhibit, but you always want something kind of new at the zoo to be happening. And that, if we look at kind of the, the top zoos in the country, they have a consistent program of development that is happening across. And as part of the master plan, that's something that we look at, kind of mix of small, medium, larger projects to happen. Just to focus on, or make sure we're mindful of time here, another key element that we see is really important is from a trends perspective, is this focus on the team, the people out there. Yes, it's about the animals, but without the right team there, you won't have the care for, for the animals or the guests. And so equally as important in making investment in habitats and buildings is making an investment in staff. And so that is also part of any master planning project to look at kind of how that investment needs to track as you build more, as the facilities change and evolve, what kind of investment in team is required. The, the next thing, and we've kind of talked about this in some of the other trends and questions that have come up, the need to continually connect with the community. And I talked about, kind of from an education side, we're not doing as much outreach. But what we're seeing from an education standpoint, but what we're seeing is making sure there are programs for everybody and that our work, our conservation work can, can go out into the community and really bringing in the, the whole entire community into the zoo. So designing not only the, the spaces, we talked about the experience, but also the, the, the programs that you're doing to make sure that they are welcoming for the entire community and creating kind of that experience that everybody can get involved in. And also doing events and programming, as I talked about, kind of events that bring in different audiences. But whether it be a, a weekend festival or a longer, a longer program that really attracts a very broad and diverse audience into the zoo. Do you want to talk a little bit about changing?
Do you wanna talk a little bit about changing audiences?
I'll give it a try. Yeah, so today's, as kind of I mentioned earlier, the audience of today is very different. One of the things that we're doing when we're planning habitats is really trying to understand not only the conservation of the species, conservation of the places, but also those animals that are, that are engaging and educational in value. And, and, you know, part of it is then we have to look at, you know, what the demographics of the zoo. Is the zoo just for stroller moms, which is certainly a big piece of what goes on in most zoos, including here in Grand Rapids at the John Ball Zoo? But part, but part of it is, you know, when we introduced gorilla at Sedgwick County Zoo some years ago, we noticed tremendous uptick in the teenage population coming to the zoo. Something about teenagers and gorillas is just, I don't know, but it worked, so. But, you know, our audiences are very different. We look at some of the habitats we're designing or have cultural themes to them. We look at the cultural areas, parts of the community that are underserved and how can we tell those stories within the zoo environment? Because not only when we're talking about an animal, we're talking about its place and where that animal comes from. Is that, is that place from Latin America? Is that place from Africa? Is that place from, well, anywhere in the world? And what, what kind of, not only the indigenous species, but the indigenous people? And we start talking about our history and some of the great cultures. We can blend those into the zoo design as well. And it really helps bring in very different demographics than what we see in the past. Yes?
Thank you for bringing up culture, because I was gonna ask you, how do you incorporate various languages? When we think about diversity in our communities, as well as communities like ADA, things like that, how do you incorporate that into your plans?
Since Peter's up out of his chair, I'm gonna turn it over to him.
So, many zoos are taking different approaches. Like for example, the Detroit Zoo, they have several languages on each sign. And talking to their CEO, they kind of open the can of worms with members of the community saying, well, what about my language? What am I, what about mine? And when you have our community where several dozen languages are spoken, that becomes problematic. I mean, there's not enough physical space. So what we're developing is QR codes that you'll be able to use your phone. And then it will bring up the, the same experience on your phone in, in your, in your host language. I probably bring a different perspective. English is not my first language. So I understand the importance of, of trying to reach other cultures that way. The other reason why it's so important is, we're a, we're a zoo, we're not a wildlife sanctuary. And why is that important? We operate where society and wildlife intersect, those tension points. So our conservation plans specifically address not only wildlife and wild places, but also the human condition. Meaning, if you look at the way a system is designed and those feedback loops, people don't wake up to kill an endangered animal. They wake up trying to meet the needs of their family. So telling that cultural story is very important. And to give that immersive experience. But we also need to meet people where they are and actually tell the story onsite in a language they understand. And we have done a lot in the, in the Hispanic community, which we've seen a huge uptake in our attendance, as well as the Asian community. And we have a different go-to-market strategy, if you will, than probably most zoos. We, we don't design our programs to directly compete for the same customers as other zoos. I, I come from the school of thought that strategy is not about competing with your competitors, but it's about seeking differentiation. How do you strategically make your product or offering different and unique? And then you'll cater to new customers. And that's what our growth has really been attributed to, and that includes people from all backgrounds.
Do you have staff that know sign language?
We do.
How do you deal with those who are sight-blind?
We participate in Culture City. And there are kits available at guest services and it's marked throughout the zoo. We also have audio, audio tracks, audio narration. There's more we could do in the space. I, I'm confident we're, we're in, we're in the top half of zoos and how we do that. But there's, there's more work we could do in the space. Thank you.
So the last, last three trends that we've, that we have are really things that we've already talked about. This importance of commitment to conservation, but kind of the local conservation in particular. And what we're seeing is this trend of not only focusing globally, but focusing locally on the species here right in our backyard. And so making sure that there is relevance to, to your guests right here in the, in the community. And you already have some programs that are happening on the local side. But how do you continue to expand those? While also not, not abandoning the international conservation, because that's important. And this is, the zoo is that gateway to international conservation. But showing those linkages between, between what's, animals are being, being shown at the, at the zoo and what's happening in the wild and making that connection and what that commitment from a resource and investment. As you saw in the, in the video, the zoo has already invested over half a million dollars in conservation. That number is gonna continue to grow. And as a, as a profession, we are looking to really grow the conservation work, both locally, regionally, and globally. And the, and the last, and the last trend is population sustainability. And we talked about this in terms of making sure that there are animals that we can care for at our zoos. And that the future, I think, is going to look differently. Right now, you know, if you wanted to build, build a polar bear exhibit, you probably can't get a polar bear to, to have at, at your, at your zoo. And that's gonna be lots of different species as we look out ten, twenty years from now. And Craig could probably speak to the kind of, how you need to build in the flexibility. But from a planning side, you need to look at what that evolution is gonna look like. And how zoos can contribute to that overall population sustainability. Craig?
No, I think, I think you, you said it well. Of course, population sustainability definitely affects how we design these habitats. You know, do we have room for family groups? Do we have room for offspring to grow independently? As Peter said, you know, what other zoos are needing these animals? Do they go out to? What's the long-range plan for, for thriving animals in, under our care?
So what we've shared here is really these top ten trends. And, you know, there are probably ten more, but we picked ten that we thought were particularly applicable to the master planning process here. And what we wanted to do is give you a sense of kind of what, what, what some of the factors are that go into a master planning and design effort as, as we look to the future. And not just, you know, what it looks like three years from now, five years from now, but what it's gonna look like in twenty years. And at least from a big-picture trend. So I'd invite kind of any questions, comments in terms of as you think about those trends or others. And are there other things that you wanna make sure that are incorporated into the zoo's master plan?
Yeah, what, yeah, what's, what are you guys thinking about we haven't brought up that you'd really like to see or needs to be considered in the future? Very important.
I'm just curious about the, the opening up the backside of the zoo. And what, are there zoos already doing that? And what would that look like?
Yeah, great question. So there's, there's two ways of doing it. The most common way right now is we create spaces, quote-unquote, for behind-the-scenes tours, end quote. And the zoo of the past, when we designed a facility for animal care, we did not consider the fact that we would have people like you and I maybe wandering back there while they're trying to take care of these animals. And so now we are. And that can be anywhere from, again, controlled small groups, which is becoming very popular, to some, you know, the forward-moving conversation is how do we turn that complete facility, make it visible? The rhino habitat that we showed at the very beginning of this facility is out in Southern California, in Palm Desert. Their rhino facility is, people can walk past that facility every day, they can engage in it, they can see what's going on with the animal care, it's right on the path. That comes with its own share of challenges from a keeping standpoint. You know, how do you control the crowd? How do you, you know, I'm worried about the, the guests and how they interact. And we're trying to do these, these sensitive procedures sometimes. So what I like to think of it about is, it's kind of like you've all been to your favorite restaurant that had the kitchen kind of right out into, out in the dining room, or you can see it. But there's also a kitchen in the back that maybe you can't see. There are facilities that you don't necessarily want the public trampling through for, because of, for the care and the wellness of the animal. But it is really important that the guests do understand the kind of care, the kind of places where these animals live. We don't want the guests, or of our guests to think that, oh, they're out here in this beautiful habitat by day, but they go into a very small, tight concrete kennel at night or something like that. That is not the case. We really wanna, we really want people to understand that the quality of care is not only in the habitat, but behind the scenes. In order to do that, we, we're really opening that up. And it's an evolution, like anything, you know? We can't just go and say, oh, let's build, let's build the zoo backwards and let's just start with the animal care facilities because, because it's just so new. You know, how do you manage the guests? When you're doing half a million or a million guests a year, how do you manage that and still maintain that quality of care? So it's a complex question, but it is being done.
And if I may add to that, we have a project coming up, the African Expansion. And the giraffe exhibit, the, you'll be able to feed, like you saw photos, but you'll also be able to go into the barn and feed, and it's open to the general public. And you'll actually be able to see the holding facility. You'll see all of it back there. And again, about how do we wanna differentiate ourselves? We, we have a lot of passion and pride about well-being, and we thought, why not show it? And it does require additional branding and marketing investment because our, I guess, biggest concern would be taking out of context. And I think you know more about this than I do, but I know some zoos have done animal hospitals where you can actually view into the hospital. And they have a little button and the glass goes opaque if something goes wrong on the operating table. But it's, uh, it, zoos are an education. And I, I think it's important to show that. And I think when people see that, they'll see how we're different than other non-AZA accredited facilities. And, and that it matters. And you know more about hospitals than I do.
No, you nailed it.
So I have a follow-up question on the, the long-term sustainability of this kind of facility. In part seems to me to require the users to be willing to pay extra for some kinds of services and amenities. The Bissell Treehouse is one example, where the public can come in, they will pay. It's not a entry fee, it's a special fee. Having my son married there, I hate that deja vu all over. So what are the, what kind of amenities are zoos using to attract that higher-end use that brings additional revenue to the operation? Such as high-end restaurants? I mean, I don't know. But, but what are the kinds of things that, that others are using that we ought to consider?
What I would say, what we're seeing is a lot of use around special events, like an Asian lantern, lights shows, some music performances, other things. What kind of, what we've been seeing is programs that extend the season of the zoo as well as the time of day. And that you're doing that with, with Asian lanterns, because that's bringing in those audiences. You're also seeing kind of individual events, brews at the zoo, those types of events. You know, breakfast, you know, smaller. But the ones that are really successful are these, these longer-term events that we're, that we're seeing. Clearly trying to expand on the event business, whether it's, you know, weddings, social events, or, or corporate events as well. You're, we're also kind of, from a revenue standpoint, we're also seeing a lot of work around different pricing models. There are a lot of zoos that are doing dynamic pricing, kind of based on when people come and usage. So that's another way that increased revenue generation happens. So there's a lot of different levers to be able to pull. But I'd say, if I had to pick one, the thing that we're seeing the most is kind of these, these longer-term events.
And then, one of the things that strikes me about John Ball Zoo, and I've looked at and gone to other zoos, John Ball Zoo has more elevation than a lot of zoos. And it seems to me like that's an incredible asset that's unique to this zoo.
That, that is correct. Yes. Having walked it yesterday, it's, I, you have a beautiful site, but it can be, I think, challenging from a mobility standpoint and how do you work with that site? But I would say there are a lot of zoos that have a lot of challenges from a site perspective. And from a design side, Craig can comment in terms of how you overcome those. But it's how do you take advantage of that unique space that you have? And I think you've, you've been doing a really great job of that out there. It's just, zoo, zoo, you know, most zoos were not always in the ideal locations. And so how do you really maximize that?
Yeah, so, so how do you, you know, it used to be, when I first came to John Ball Zoo some years ago, it seemed like it was a slog up the hill, right? You came in, you paid, and it was like, straight up. Well, you know, in the last year or two, they've opened the pygmy hippo habitat, which is, takes part of that. There's gonna be, you know, newer habitats lower than that, it's gonna be newer habitats above that. So as we, as, what we do is we think about it rather than a slog up the hill. We think of it as how do we create, create an experience? So now, instead of like, oh my gosh, I've gotta walk up that hill, it's like, how do you, how do you, how do you weave in and out? How do you create experiences along the way? So by the time you get to the top of the hill, you don't even realize you climbed to the top of the hill. And that's really what we're, we're doing. And, you know, the most likely location for an African Expansion is gonna be at the top of the hill. But how do we create that experience, you know, so it's seamless and it's not a slog? You know, we don't want paths that are doing this, we want it to be more like this. We create these places along the way. I call it the Guggenheim Experience. Everybody's been to the Guggenheim Museum in New York City. You know, it's basically one gigantic ramp. You don't even realize you're going up a ramp, and all of a sudden you're at the top. So that's kind of, kind of how we look at it from a design standpoint.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. So I just wanna briefly touch on, I think you had the slide about the, the entryway and, and programming and, and especially kind of outside of the habitat area. And so I did at least wanna ask, you know, we passed an amendment earlier this year to the current master plan on, that largely deals with the area outside of the, in the, the zoo-specific location, the green space and the parkland. Is the plan, is it currently the idea that, that amendment, since it did have a fairly long-term vision for that area, that that'd just be embedded into the current master plan update? Or are we thinking about some tweaks being made? Or is that just too early to tell?
Probably, so it's a yes-and conversation?
And, you know, I'm just curious.
Our focus of our planning efforts to date have been within kind of what I call the hill, if you will.
Yeah.
We are looking at where the front entry is and some of that area, but we also look at the long term. Because one of the things when you're doing master planning is, you have to preserve space for the future. You have to think, you have to think, what's it gonna be in fifty years? Because we don't wanna go and spend twenty million dollars and put it in the wrong location. And then, you know, in ten years, you know, some, some other group comes in front of you, you know, comes in front of you and goes, yeah, we shouldn't have done that. So we, so we, so it's very thoughtful. The growth is very thoughtful. And that's one of the reasons why you do master planning. So we will, you know, we can, we look at the communities around, like Peter mentioned. We have community groups this afternoon we're visiting with. So it's not just that hill, it's not just the parking area down in the more level part of the zoo, but it's really the, the whole area and how's it connect to the larger community.
You know, and, you know, I largely speak to this because everything you explained about zoo management and wildlife management and well-being, you're the experts, I defer to you all, right? And, but, you know, we did have significant folks talking about how, regardless of how it's defined legally, how vital that, that publicly available green space is for them. And, you know, I, I think the, the decision made to ensure that there was at least adequate surface parking for now was, was the right choice to make, given the circumstances we're in. I do wanna make sure that whatever master plan we do has, you know, puts together a, a, a plan that can help maximize the benefit of, of that available parkland, right? Because that is how this asset is seen by so many different people in so many different ways. And improves the quality of life for those around it. And, you know, whether that's- the quality of life for those around it. And, you know, whether that's figuring out, you know, how to make that area as enjoyable as possible, and also, you know, because the zoo functions during a certain subset of the year, what's, what are ways that the areas that are not inside the zoo boundaries, but part of the zoo property can be programmed in the winter, right? You know, we have, on North Monroe, the DDA, our Downtown Development Authority owns a number of different parking lots, that they find ways to program in different ways, whether it's winter or spring, when they don't need to be used as parking lots. And, you know, I certainly see that as another valuable concept for programming, for even potentially revenue generation, but ways that we can activate those spaces that can be used when the zoo is not open, or, you know, not, doesn't have the same kind of peak turnout.
Yes, and what I like about what you're saying is that, you know, the future zoo entry complex could act as that hub to serve between the park and the green space and the zoo itself. It could become the center of activity. So it really could feed in well to the both and.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Sort of riffing off of the comments from Commissioner Wooden, I think one of the unique aspects of John Ball Zoo is that it is a neighborhood zoo, right? It is embedded into a neighborhood, it has deep ties into that neighborhood. I think we saw that with the conversations last fall, we saw that with what Commissioner Wooden just brought up. I'm curious, in the master plan process, sort of how that impacts the way that we're going about conversations about zoo footprint and zoo programming, and if there are exemplar zoos that you know of that have engaged in that conversation about being part of a deeply embedded neighborhood space?
You know, you bring up a good point. It seems like it's part of the dialogue everywhere we go. We're doing master planning right now at Zoo Atlanta. Zoo Atlanta is in a historic neighborhood, it's being gentrified, and the neighbors do not want the zoo to grow, and it's a huge, huge attraction for the city. So much like we're doing today at the John Ball Zoo, we've had some engagement sessions with the neighbors, we have asked them to come in, and much like we're asking you right now, what do you want to see in your zoo? And that's just an important part of the dialogue. And then, you know, just like what we take from this meeting, well, we'll go back and see what we can do to really meet those needs of the neighborhood. And there's no reason why, you know, again, if we create this new entry focus piece, why that can't be a pride of the neighborhood. I recently worked on a school, I mean, it's not a zoo, but it was a private school for special-needs children, and we went into a neighborhood, and the neighborhood's like, we don't, you know, we absolutely do not want a school in our neighborhood because of the traffic. It's always about the traffic, right? Oh, the buses, the kids, you know, and all the noise. Well, guess what? That school has now become a hub of that community. And they, and the school said, all right, we hear you, we're going to open our building up. You can use it for community meetings, you can use it for anything else. And the community, that community now, if you said, we're going to take your school away, they would probably throw a fit. But it didn't start out like that. So it's really about engaging and making sure that it's not an us and them, it's a yes, it's a both and.
Yeah, thank you.
Other comments, ideas, questions?
The elevation is one, you know, distinctive aspect of our site, but also all the trees. And I think, I think that John Ball Zoo is exceptionally beautiful.
Absolutely.
And I'm just wondering, this, you know, expansion on the site, you know, how much is the forestry a part of it?
It's a significant part of it. We, you know, when we're looking at any planning, any habitat, I can tell you the first thing that Almond does is he brings out a plan and says, here's the trees, here's the ones that's important to us, and if we have to take trees down, we're putting trees back. And so the forestry, again, as a conservation organization, the last thing we want to do is mow down the forest, right? Because we're taking away local habitat when we do that. So it's really important that we increase and improve that habitat for those birds and those other small mammals that live in the zoo that we haven't even talked about today. So yes, so, you know, we do have, we do have to move trees, we do have to replant trees, but again, as Peter said, it's part of the, part of the community, it's part of who we are at our core, and the forest is extraordinarily important part of it. There's a couple of trees that we've been working around, and Almond says, you know, don't even, don't even think about it. And that's good. And, you know, as long as we know that going into design, there's no reason why those trees can't be saved, as long as you know it going into it. Don't wait until the contractor's out there.
Go ahead.
If I have any final thoughts, I really appreciate your focus on the well-being and on that and the value for people who are coming. And I do think that's true. I have a friend who works, I don't like zoos, and, you know, I hadn't been at a zoo since my kid was six years old there. And was there a couple of years ago, I was just stunned at how different it was, and the focus on conservation. And so, I mean, I agree that that's got to be sold as a value, so I think that it's a big attraction. And I think also getting to know the animals as individuals, I think is the kind of thing that would bring people back as repeat, you know, my kid was there every day for school, and those zoo school kids really got to know the animals as individuals, which ones argued and which one does that and the other thing. And I think if that's something where people start to feel connected and serve animals, that's the kind of thing that I'm trying to do.
Yeah. Zoos in the John Ball Zoo has always been focused on animal well-being. It's the increased focus that we're all looking for, and we also need to communicate that, the work that we're doing, and showing that's why kind of the Hidden Zoo, all of that work has always been happening. It's now telling the guests about it and communicating the importance of that.
Thank you for saying that, Commissioner Bergman. Three of us, our daughters, when our children went through the program, and I think it's very important to communicate because what I experienced from community, they see discussing the zoo as animals versus, and it's all connected. And so by you talking about the forestry and the horticulture and all of that, it's not just the animals, but it is about the environment, and how we are all responsible for being conservationists to preserve that. I was just curious, thinking of since bringing that message more and more and more, have you ever done anything, and Peter probably could answer this, like, I was just thinking, wow, I wish the animation, migration was shown at the zoo, and you have an opportunity to talk about the different birds that were a part of that, or Madagascar was shown at the zoo. And you're, we have these animals in our zoo, and at San Diego, or I'm from St. Louis, I'm very proud of Forest Park Zoo, that kind of stuff. Do you guys do anything like that?
We don't, but it's an interesting idea, and that's what I'm also excited about this master planning process is to capture.
I want to be paid for my idea.
We better trademark it really quick. But this is exactly what we're trying to capture, is what would you like to see in the zoo of the future, and how the zoo would serve the community?
I know, the close friends we have who have young children would love to host a movie at the zoo, have the birthday party there, and then part of that conversation would be about conservation, understanding of forestry, understanding of horticulture, and here are the animals that are actually at our zoo, as well as here are some of the other zoos across the country. Just an idea.
Yeah.
I'm pretty good at that. I can do that much.
I like that, that's really clever. Many decades ago, I worked in the movie theater industry, so I probably have a bias towards that, too.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, do we need to talk about process a little bit at this point, too?
Sure. So, the zoo and consultants are engaging various parts of the community in information gathering and exchange, and I think the goal is to have a master plan ready for board approval by the end of the year. That's the goal. Per the zoo operating agreement, the zoo brings a master plan every 10 years, so 2025 would be the natural time for that to come up next. And then we also do plan to bring kind of a revamped zoo operating agreement. I don't think it's seen significant amendment since it was originally adopted. And so that would also be part of that close-to-the-end-of-the-year activity.
So at this point, then, Peter and team, are you going out to the community and engaging them to absorb their thoughts, their ideas, their perspectives? And then, I am going to think that this board will want to see something before you send us a final for consideration. So will, is there a stage point where we can anticipate we will get a draft back for consideration?
You're correct. We're going out to the, so 2 o'clock is stakeholders, and then at the end of the day is a community meeting. Yes, we would like to bring something back. We don't have a dates and timeline established. I would, I think I would defer to maybe...
We got August 8th, we're going back some bubble consumption.
Oh, right, but I think you want to, maybe I misunderstood the question, that you wanted to see the community feedback before the bubbles?
Either one, I just think you want to engage the board on how that process is going, so you can report and check back in with us as to what you're coming up with, so we don't end up with sort of, here's the final version, up or down. We're able to get that, do maybe another level of response and assessment from the board before you do the final.
Right. So the one in August is not the final, and it is collecting the feedback. And I think I'll defer to Josh. My instinct being, speaking on the spot, would be, how do we incorporate all of that feedback into that August meeting, just to be respectful of your time?
Yep.
But the August meeting is not a final master plan by any means.
Okay. All right. Anything else in the presentation?
No, thank you.
Anything else, anything else from the commissioners? All right. Thank you all for being here today. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentations, and we look forward to bringing this to the next up.
Thank you.
Anything else, Al? If not, we are adjourned.